Your lie, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to call this Greenville County Council Regular Meeting to order, and we'll begin with the invocation if we could to have Mr. Counselor Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bow heads, please. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, humbling ourselves because we are servants of the people in Greenville County. They have elected us to lead and to govern, and give us the minds and the hearts to do everything we can for the betterment of everyone in Greenville County. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please, your asked for the place of allegiance.
... to the act of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes.
In favor, please say aye. Next on the agenda, we have proclamations of special recognitions, but I don't believe that we have any, correct, Ms. Stone?
That is correct, sir.
So we will move on to appearances, current agenda items. Ms. Stone.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers. The first is Diane Vreeland. Her topic is 11A Cluster Housing.
Welcome, Ms. Vreeland.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Diane Vreeland, on behalf of Greenville County Republican Women, 413 Heather Falls Lane, Simpsonville. I am here to voice support for the removal of Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and to prohibit cluster developments in Greenville County. At some point in time, I could see where this regulation might have been well-meaning, but unfortunately, developers have taken advantage by placing these developments in floodlands, forested areas, and farmland. In addition, roads and retention ponds were labeled as open space to meet the requirements. That is just plain ridiculous. To make matters worse, buildings were allowed to abut sidewalks with no green space between the two. I personally would like to see developments that complement their surrounding areas and add to their charm rather than looking so out of place and not at all harmonious with existing properties. In addition, our infrastructure is maxed out as it stands now and cannot keep up with its current demands. Adding more development without the benefit of impact fees just compounds the problem. Someone asked me if developers have made contributions to current and past council members' campaigns. I have no idea, but would like you all to go on the record and state whether you have or have not received campaign donations from developers. The residents of Greenville County spoke loud and clear in the last election by replacing four-county seats with conservative candidates that vowed to protect Greenville County from grotesque overdevelopment. Read the room, the people are angry. It is up to you to do what is right and just for the people who elected you, to serve them, and vote in favor of the removal of Article 11 and prohibit the building of cluster developments in Greenville County. I would like to hand a copy of my statement to the clerk so it's part of the public record.
Thank you, Ms. Vreeland. Ms. Stone?
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Audrey Pazin, and her topic is 11A Cluster Housing.
Welcome, Ms. Pazin.
I know you've missed me, but I'm glad to be with you tonight. Audrey Pazin, let me be your canary in the coal mine, please. Let me give you some cautionary advice about this proposed ordinance. And I would hope you'd read that big case I filed about the UDO, because a good part of it addresses constitutional rights, and that's implicated in this ordinance, too. You need a constitutionally sustainable justification when you tinker with landowners' rights, and what you've got in this ordinance for legislative findings does not come close. To say that the cluster development has been misconstrued or misinterpreted incorrectly used, that's a prescription to change the composition of your planning commission. That's not a justification to outlaw cluster development. So let me suggest to you a way to have constitutionally sustainable grounds to do what you'd like to do. And as always, I start with the Enabling Act, and that is the South Carolina, you know it, comprehensive local government planning, it's a mouthful, right? Section 6-29-720A and B both tell us that when there's going to be a land development regulation, it should be in furtherance of the comprehensive plan. So what you should do in your legislative findings is to say that you need this ordinance you're proposing to serve the remedial purpose of preventing further deleterious effects on a comprehensive plan. Specifically, what comes to my mind, cluster development has eroded the perimeters of protected and character areas in the comprehensive plan. It's produced unpredictable development with adverse impacts, including development in excessive amounts in areas that don't have infrastructure. You know, we're not Colorado. Bicycles will only go so far here. We need infrastructure that includes roads, law enforcement, recreational areas. These things have to be in place before development. Cluster development has resulted in approval with tremendous and exaggerated unsustainable population growth in places where it makes no sense, has caused crime, and has had adverse impacts. Let me quickly say that if you don't address the zoning ordinances on open development, this thing will do nothing except create litigation and confusion of your planning commission. You must address the both of them, because both of them have the same problem. They allow development on a parcel of land, whether it's developable or not, and density is computed based on acreage rather than what is constrained because of environment or terrain. Cut out undevelopable areas when you do the metric on density, and you'll find that you can work with open development and clusters without too much pain. I'm happy to take questions. I have some expertise on this question of the Enabling Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pazin. Next on the agenda, we have public hearings. A Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property, Counselor Collins.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 7A, Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance authorizing the transfer of a county-owned approximately 5.3-acre parcel of real property located on Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer, and to authorize the chairman of county council and the county administrator to execute appropriate deeds and agreements.
Thank you. Ms. Stone, do we have anybody to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker, Charles Curriton, in favor.
Mr. Currit? Welcome.
Thank you, welcome, or thank you. Good evening. My name is actually Santi Charles Curriton. Originally from Greenville, South Carolina, live in Seven Huntsman Court, Simpsonville, South Carolina now. Here, I'm obviously in favor of this. I was here in, I think, November, maybe December as well. Want to specifically thank now Vice Chairman Rick Bradley, also Chairman Blunt as well for their support last year. It was put on hold as it was about to be sold at the time. Just as a quick background on the 5.3 acres, it was originally purchased on January 19, 1926, from Mr. Davenport by my grandfather, John H. Chapman, calling Professor Chapman, as director of Chapman, the Chapman Grove School and Agricultural Club. The sale is recorded in the deed book. As on October 12, 1973, the Chapman Grove Community Club, which was part of that, was went in contract with the Greenville County Recreation Commission with the very specific restrictions based on, as recorded in the deed book as well. It being understood that within described property is conveyed to the Greenville County Recreation for the purpose of being used for recreation and/or a all-part purposes. And I'll just kind of stop there. And otherwise, it says property ceased to be used for said purposes, the same will revert to the grant or its successors. I'm representing the Chapman family, also representing as a treasurer of the Chapman Grove Community Club, which we reformed again. And again, would like to just thank the 2025 Council for expecting you to vote in favor of this transfer. And also, just as a invite, there will be a ceremony on September 13 at the New Pleasant Grove Baptist Church honoring that my grandfather's school from 1921 to 1954 that was, will be dedicated. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Curriton. Next on the, we have the consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Now move on to Agenda Item 9, Resolutions. A, Resolution to Initiate an Impact Fee Ordinance and Associated Capital Improvement Plan in Greenville County, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 9A, Resolution to Initiate an Impact Fee Ordinance and Associated Capital Improvement Plan in Greenville County. Make a motion, a move for adoption of resolution directing the planning commission to initiate and review studies to make a recommendation for a Greenville County Impact Fee Ordinance and Associated Capital Improvement Plan covering the unincorporated area of Greenville County.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Move on to Item B, Textile Communities Revitalization Certification, Hallmark Settlement Manor LP, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Textile Communities Revitalization Certification, Hallmark Settlement Manor LP. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, I move for an adoption of resolution to provide a certification pursuant to the South Carolina Textile Communities Revitalization Act for certain property located at Settlement Road and adjacent to the former Folk Fur Company property in Greenville, South Carolina.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Requested?
Mr. Chairman, you have 11 in favor, no one opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much. The item passes. We'll move on to Item C, Abandoned Building Revitalization Certification, 1001 Keys Drive, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Abandoned Building Revitalization Certification, 1001 Keys Drive. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, I move to, for adoption of resolution to provide a certification pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act for the property located at 1001 Keys Drive, Greenville, South Carolina.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have 11 in favor, no one opposed, one absent.
Thank you. Item C passes. We'll move on to Item D, Project AIM Inducement Resolution, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Project AIM Inducement Resolution. Mr. Chairman, the motion is I move for adoption of resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project AIM, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes and providing for related matters.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item? All in favor?
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine in favor, two opposed, one absent.
Thank you. The item passes. Move on to Item E, Project UP Inducement Resolution, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Project UP Inducement Resolution. Mr. Chairman, the motion, I move for an adoption of resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project UP, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and a special source credit agreement with respect to an industrial project in the county whereby the project would be subject to the payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes, and whereby the project company will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment and related qualified infrastructure and providing for related matters.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item?
Just a point of clarification to make sure, as the chairman of finance, that this was passed through the finance committee as, do you know what the, do you remember what the vote was? Please?
Unanimous, I believe.
It was unanimous.
Okay, so we came out of committee unanimous. Okay, just making sure. So it was benefit shown to the finance committee. Okay.
Some of these, we come out of finance to say that it deserves to come to full counsel. So, you know, regardless of whether it's unanimous or not, I think full counsel on many of these need to have a say.
Well.
Counselor McGahey.
Yeah, just want to make sure, because I'm being asked to vote on something I've not seen the merits of. So the present, the appearance to the public is I'm voting yes to give a feel about, and I've never seen the financials on it. So I just want to make sure that everybody in the council and out in towns aware that I have not seen the benefit. Now, I'm trusting that the finance committee, if it was a 5-0 vote, there was some merit to it. That's, I'm just asking to make sure.
Counselor Seaman.
Chairman, just for all my colleagues, as a reminder, we all have access to the executive session materials in box, and actually, GADC has a really good new format that they've presented to finance, which is like a great one snapshot of county benefit. So I encourage you to take a look at that, for sure.
Yeah, I was unaware, but thank you. Perfect, I'll look.
All right. So we will move on to Item F, which is.
Was there a vote?
Thank you. Dr. Shaw, would you like a roll call? Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, three opposed, one absent.
Thank you. Item passes. We'll move on to Item F, Project Precedent Inducement Resolution, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Project Precedent Inducement Resolution. Mr. Chairman, the motion, I move for an adoption of resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an inducement agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project Precedent, whereby, under certain conditions, Greenville County will execute a fee in lieu of tax and a special source credit agreement with respect to a project in the county whereby the project would be subject to payment of certain fees in lieu of taxes, and whereby Project Precedent will be provided certain credits against fee payments in reimbursement of investment and related qualified infrastructure and providing related matters.
Thank you. Any question on the item or the motion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call's been requested.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight in favor, three opposed, one absent.
Thank you. The item passes. We will move on to 10, Ordinance is a third reading. A, CZ 2025-030, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 317 Rocky Creek Road requesting rezoning from PD to RS. I move to adopt, adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. CZ 2025-031, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Property located at 2726 Fort Show's Road requesting rezoning from RS to S1. I move to adopt the disorder, move, adoption of this ordinance at third reading.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next to B, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions, Counselor McGahey.
Yes, sir. Ordinance is third reading, item 10B, Stormwater Ordinance Revisions. Motion, I move for adoption at third reading and ordinance to amend the Greenville County Stormwater Management Ordinance to implement requirements and procedures in compliance with federal and state regulations pursuant to the county's NPDES permit.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Move to C, Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chapman Grove Road Transfer of Property. Mr. Chairman, make a motion, I move for an adoption at third reading and ordinance to authorize the transfer of a county-owned approximately 5.3-acre parcel of real, real property located on Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer, and to authorize the chairman of county council and the county administrator to execute the appropriate deeds and agreements.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to Item 11, Ordinance is at second reading. A, Land Development Regulations Amendment, Cluster Housing, Counselor Bradley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the committee, I move for approval at second reading and ordinance to delete Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and to prohibit new cluster developments in Greenville County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an amendment.
Counselor McGahey.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to amend the proposed ordinance in order to impose a temporary 12-month moratorium on the acceptance, processing, or approval of any new preliminary plans or development applications that propose cluster development as defined in Article 11 of the Greenville County Land Development Regulations and under the open space requirement of Section 7-2 of the zoning ordinance. This temporary moratorium is necessary to provide adequate time for a comprehensive review and the development of meaningful legally sound revisions to land development regulations ordinance. A copy of the proposed amendment is in each council member's seat.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment?
My, yes.
Dr. Shaw?
My only concern is, just going through a moratorium with this council about a year ago, it seemed the stretch was nine months, and does it say 12 months?
It does say 12 months.
So my concern was, is the length. I completely support the moratorium and the underlying ordinance, but I think 12 months might immediately get us into trouble.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGahey.
I do plan after this is passed to make a motion to hold it until, so we can get it to a public hearing. So that might negate some of that for you. We'll leave it at 12, I'm going to make motion to hold, so it won't go to.
I'm sorry, one more time, please.
I'm going to make a motion to hold it after we pass it, and that way the 12 months can be, it'll go to public reading, so we can amend it at public hearing at second reading.
Okay. Legislative sleight of hand.
Yeah, so if it's, yeah, so if it is, if there is some pushback, we can make it nine months at the second reading.
Not a problem.
All right. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wondering how this plays into our UDO efforts. Simultaneous, I mean, it just seems like we have, we've had a couple of things come before us that seemingly would be taken care of if we addressed it via the UDO.
Yeah, so if the UDO gets, comes out of cow next time, and it is ineffective if it gets killed, then this'll, this'll put the stopgap on this until we fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Phan.
Mr. Chairman, I applaud the effort with regards to our need to address the, the cluster development. I'm not for getting rid of it, and I've made that emphatically clear. I think it has a place, but under its current status, it is just egregious the way a third more houses are actually built above and beyond that the zoning even allows. I think there's some instances when, when it does work, but I'm not for getting rid of it. I want to make sure that everybody, because you know you're going to get real pushback about a moratorium. So make sure everybody knows that you do have a provision that we can repeal the moratorium the second we come up with a compromise that everybody can live with. Because we're going to get blown up about a moratorium for a year if they think that's literal.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor McGahey.
So to, Mr. Phan, there is a, on page two of the proposed amendment, new language, the early termination provision, that, yeah, we can bring it out and bring, as soon as we fix it, we can cancel this and go ahead with the, with the new ordinance.
Sorry.
Just for information for the council, that I have reached out to community leaders, not only in my district, but countywide, and we are meeting again the stockholders next tomorrow to go over, well, I've sent to some of you already, so we already have a new amendment or a new ordinance to replace this. So it is in the works, and it's, so it's not like it's not being anything done. So we thought ahead of time and been working on it a month, just for information.
I read it, I think it's a great start. I do have a question. Are any of you comfortable, Mr. Shaw, would remember of bringing, while we going through these maturation, to put 3-point, Section 3.1 back in the LDR?
What I remember about 3.1 is we were getting sued by three people on one side and three people on the other side, that it was an unsustainable ordinance, it just doesn't work. So I'm happy to work with what we're trying to do to fix all this, but I think, yeah, I mean, the, the call of the people is to have 3.1 back, but 3.1 was just not tenable. But anything it was trying to do, I'll be happy to get involved with trying to make the next one work, which, which I thought is what we did with, with back then, but obviously not. Yeah, we didn't, yeah. The other thing is, I'm a little unclear, if we pass this right now, does it put a moratorium on right now, or is it somehow on hold or something?
I believe, and attorney could speak to this, I believe there is a provision that, that basically begins the process now where it would put it on hold.
Well, once you, there, we've invoked, or it's invoked, the pending ordinance doctrine on this particular one. So under that, once, once it's, once the amendment is adopted and once notice of public hearing hits, so that, and that date will be, it's going to have to be 30 days, so, and, and we talked to Regina, so we think it's August 2. Okay, August 1 is likely that date. It's not stated as a date there, we weren't clear what date, but on that date, pending ordinance doctrine would apply, which would mean the gate would close at that point. And even though. And, um, even though it hadn't been fully gone through all the readings yet, and at that point, the, the provisions about prohibiting people from applying for those particular type of developments would start then. So, that's why that's in there in Section 6.
All right. Counselor Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're just, um, a logistical, in terms of the public being able to see the amendment we have before us, can our online agenda be updated so that they would have this material available to them? Okay. Clerk says yes.
We got an answer? All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Counselor Collins?
Yes, sir, thank you. You know, I just want to explain, you know, the moratorium is not a boogeyman. It's a tool that we have as a legislative body to right the ship. If you look at the UDO, rest its soul, I pray. If you look at the zoning ordinance and the LDRs, which the reason the UDO was created is because of non-communication between the two, and so if you look at it now, it's not communicating anything. But the statute specifically says for zoning or the planning, that's, says a moratorium is authorized for a spec, specific amount of time with extension. So, I think we need to not be afraid of it and blowback. My goodness, the budget blowback, I'm still getting blown back because of the pork that was in that thing. But anyway, um, let's not lose sight of doing something correctly, because we are the stewards of this land, regardless of who sits in this seat now and years to come.
You, counselor? Any other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Forber?
Um, I just want to know how, like realistically, how fast are we gonna have a replacement for, um, this cluster housing ordinance?
I, I don't know as far as timeline goes. I know that count.
I'm not on P and D, so.
No, I would, I would hope within, before the end of the year.
Yes, I would, uh, I would hope even sooner than that.
Just, just because of the timeline it gonna take, once we have, once we put out a new, a first read, a notice, first reading, second reading, third reading, it's gonna take us three months.
Yeah, for sure. You know, we like to have a workshop also, make sure everybody's on board with it before we proceed with it, so.
We can do that in the next two weeks.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody understand the amendment? Of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
No, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Like, make another motion, please?
Counselor McGee.
I move to hold this item for a public hearing to be held on September 2nd, 2025.
Now, do we need to, oh wait.
Y'all vote, y'all now amended the ordinance.
Gotcha.
Now, the ord, what you're gonna do with it next is the next motion, whether to, and that's the next move.
All right. Everybody understand the motion?
Can we just confirm the date? September or August?
Well, no, what, what'll happen is, the note, the public hearing will be on September 2nd, but they need 30 days, so August 2nd will be the notification. That's when the moratorium pursuant to the act that allows us to stop it then as of notification, but we actually won't have the hearing for 30 days. That way, it's not open for another 30 days, and we don't have a gold rush of people with applications for cluster housing because they know what's coming.
Anybody else? In favor of the motion to hold, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We'll move on to ordinances at first reading. Counselor Bradley.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I present for first reading zoning docket CZ 2025 dash 45 through CZ 2025 dash 053.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Refer, this will be sent to the Planning and Development Committee. Thank you. We'll move on to item B, Caesar's Head Fire Service Area Millage Request and Fire Protection Contract with Cedar Mountain Fire and Rescue. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caesar's Head Fire Service Area Millage Request and Fire Protection Contract with Cedar Mountain Fire and Rescue. I present for the first reading, ordinance to provide for an increase to the millage rate levied by the Caesar's Head Fire Service Area and to authorize the Chairman of County Council and the County Administrator to renew the contract for fire protection and first responder services with Cedar Mountain Fire Rescue Incorporated.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. Next is C, Transfer of Property, 10.9 Acres Around Woodside Mill Community, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Transfer of Property, 10.9 Acres Around Woodside Mill Community. I present for first reading, an ordinance to authorize the transfer approximately 10.9 acres of real property located around the Woodside Mill Community to the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority and to authorize the execution of deeds and other documents and agreements related hereto.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. Item D, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial and Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elk, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial and Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Elk. I present for first reading, ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project Elk.
Thank you. This will stay on the council floor. Item E, Project AIM Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Project AIM Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement. I present for the first reading, ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county at this time as Project AIM with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, and this will also stay on the council floor. Item F, Project UP Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Project UP Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement. I present for first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county at this time as Project UP with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. G, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project UP, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project UP. I present for the first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project UP.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. H, Project Precedent Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Project Precedent Fee in Lieu of Tax Agreement. I present for the first reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company or companies known to the county at this time as Project Precedent with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, and this will remain on the council floor. I, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Precedent, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Precedent. I present for the first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project Precedent.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor. J, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Vista, Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park 2010 Park Agreement Amendment, Project Vista. I present for the first reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park 2010 park of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project Vista.
Thank you, and this will stay on the council floor as well. And then the final item here is K, Amendment to Ordinance Number 5577, Section 1 Sunset Provision, Counselor Bradley.
As noticed on the county council agenda, I present for the first reading, ordinance to amend ordinance number 5577, which update design standards for septic development in unzoned areas of the county and establishes countywide refr, preparing buffer requirements to change the sunset provision for ordinance from January 2, 2026 to January 2, 2028.
Thank you, and we'll refer this to the Planning and Development Committee. We'll move on to the next agenda, item 13, Committee Reports, and it says there are none, so we will move on to public comments and.
Mr. Chairman, we have no speakers.
I was gonna ask too, I, I did see, uh, I believe Ms. Jackson's here, if that's correct. If, if, can you raise your hands? If, if, if council is willing, um, she had discussed wanting to come and speak to us, and she just didn't make it in time to sign up, so if everybody will be okay with that, I would love to have her come and share.
Absolutely.
All right. So, Ms. Kaya Jackson, correct? Welcome. If you don't mind, just give us your name and address for the record, and that way we'll have you in.
Kaya Jackson, 326 Maple State Farms Court, Greenville, South Carolina, 29617.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before I begin, I would like to thank Chairman Benton Blunt for allowing this opportunity to tell my daughter's story. My name is Kaya Jackson. My mom and I moved to Greenville 26 years ago from, from New York. She was looking for a safe place to raise me, a place I can thrive, and a place that I can eventually raise my own family in safety to. I graduated from Travelers Rest High School in 2005. I am a member of the Rock Ages Baptist Church on Augusta Road with Pastor Terry A. King. My husband, Jamias, and I currently live in Berea. With our five children, Shakaya, Malaysia, Majia, Jacade, and Andrea, but every one member of the family is our dog, favorite member of the family is our dog, Molly G. We love, we love Greenville, especially Falls Park and the Reddy River. The evenings we spend at Reddy River are some of the sweetest moments of my life, but they often leave my heart broken because I wish that I had all six of my children with me. My sweet girl, Egypt Brielle Henderson, died February 26, 2024 at 3:37 a.m. She was 10 years old. About nine of those years was a miracle according to her neurosurgeon. At 17 months old, on February 23rd, 2015, her father beat her in the back of the head until she was unconscious, and she was diagnosed with Shaken Baby Syndrome, also known as abusive head trauma. We waited, he waited almost 24 hours to call 911, pray the doctor, it didn't just happen. It happened 24 hours prior. After removing part of her brain, her doctors told me she probably wouldn't make it through the night. The next nine years, she was quadripedic with severe cerebral palsy, epilepsy, chronic lung disease from her breathing tube, scoliosis, hip dysplasia, and a feeding tube. She would grind her teeth so bad that you could barely see the tooth hidden in the gums, but she would still smile, she was still a happy baby. I think about who she would have been if she hadn't been beaten and shaken. Would she have grown up to be a doctor, a lawyer, a ballerina? Would she have been the scientist that found the cure to cancer? Would she have fed the hungry, served the poor? Would she, who would she have married? Who would my grandkids be? She left the family, a mother traumatized by not only the abuse, but also by the lack of things being done to prevent this from happening to others. Her father, biofather, abuser, would be out of jail in five years. In the weeks that followed, I had the opportunity to cave and give in to my depression. No one had blamed me if I had isolated. There were still times that I find myself wanting to stay in bed and hope that my loss was all just a part of a bad dream. However, I choose the other option. I choose to pick myself up and do something, to move away from the defeat and towards a better community for everyone. I form an organization named Justice for Shaken Babies and member of Egypt Henderson. We are a help, help, heartfelt initiative dedicated to seeking justice for shaken babies. Our mission to raise awareness, gather support, and offer assistance to affected families. We aim to provide a platform for individuals to contribute through donations, volunteer work, and participation in fundraising events. We are committed to advocating for the rights of shaken babies and their families. We strive to make a meaningful impact of their journey towards justice. Our website is foreveregipt2013.org. We have been featured on all the news stations. Also, we have a pending article that's about to be in, uh, People Magazine, telling my daughter's story. I'm here to ask you to join me in remembering Egypt and all the babies affected by Shaken Baby Syndrome. I want the street she lived on to forever be marked in honor. This way, she won't be forgotten on Maple State Farms Court and the surrounding area, and to serve as a reminder to every parent of a baby, never shake a baby. Don't shake and take a break.
Thank you very much for sharing that story. I, I did want to ask you one question, because you mentioned this to me on the phone, but you talked about a, a bookbag drive that you're doing in her honor as well. Could you share that with the public?
Yes, I have Egypt Honorary Bookbag, um, giveaway. It's gonna be at Unity Park on, uh, the 26th of this month. Everything is free to, uh, free for the kids, community ages. It's from kindergarten to fifth grade, and everything is free. So, I just feel like to do this in my baby's honor. I do a lot of stuff in honor. I had a billboard on Woodford Road that I put up. Um, I help other, uh, parents. I do parenting classes where I teach about Shaken Baby Syndrome, because what my baby went through never should have happened to my baby or any kid, so this is my way of grieving, of giving back to the community, and everything I do is honor of my sweet girl, Egypt.
Absolutely. Well, my, on behalf of council, we're sorry for your loss, but we are very encouraged to see you taking a stand to try to make a difference. And, uh, just to share with my colleagues, she is interested in getting a street in her subdivision named after Egypt, so, uh, staff's already said that they're gonna help work through that process, applications and all such, so I wanted to share that with everybody. Thank you very much for sharing your story.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Next, on the agenda, we have the administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I just want to give you a, a couple, uh, personnel updates that are occurring or have occurred. As you know, T. Coker, uh, has left, Assistant Administrator T. Coker, has gone to Simpsonville City Manager. So, in the interim, Hesha, uh, will be handling any public works, of course, building codes, planning, land development, any issues that you may have, just call Hesha, and she'll get it to the right place. We also have hired a new planning director, I think some of you have met him last night, Draper Carlisle. He came to us from Greenwood. Uh, and then, uh, Deborah Hamm, our HR Director, she has retired at the end of, uh, June, and, uh, we're in the process of finding a replacement for her. And then Kevin Hunter will be retiring in September, so we're in that process also. You know, as the workforce ages a bit, uh, we'll be dealing with, uh, new individuals coming on board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have requests and motions by council members. Anybody have anything you'd like to share tonight?
Will we adjourn?
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good evening.